Yes, I got it.
Good morning.
Hey there, how are you?
Need my coffee today.
And I'm seeing myself be kind of glitchy, which is a little concerning because it's probably an internet thing here. We had an issue last Monday morning where I know Jill Sproul got dropped off of a Zoom meeting six times and told us with our technical folks the next day that, oh, it's your internet service. So hopefully I'll make sure, make one of you guys a co-host just in case, but I don't think that matters. I think once the, once it all starts that it does, even if I was to go away, you guys would be fine.
Okay.
How are you doing other than that?
Oh, good. No, I just had a, you know, this, one of those mornings where the body's saying, you know what? We want to stay in bed longer.
Hey, are you planning on attending to the Tuesday JITC meeting for SBLYs?
Yeah, that's over at Canine Social, that one?
No, not that one. They're, they have their regular meetings at downtown FSCJ.
Okay.
And it's at 7:30 in the morning. I think their program actually starts at eight. They do a hybrid virtual in-person and Daniel Davis is going to be the facilitator for the questions, which begs the next question is, did somebody not already call you about that?
That's what I'm looking through to see about it. So.
It should have been Johnny Helms or Jill.
No, but what did, what would the title, if I was search email for, what would it be?
JITC, maybe council meeting, SBLY meeting?
Yeah, I got, that's the one that's, I thought it was at Canine Social.
Because I have, the Canine Social is the one Carlton's doing with Jill.
Okay, because I have the one, because we were all joking about, I'll bring whiskey for the coffee.
Yeah, that's not the one. Let me, I'm gonna have to, I got thrown into this on yesterday. So I'm gonna have to check and make sure that everybody's been contacted and show up.
Okay, because this thing is for May 26th, nine to 10:30 organizer Jill Sproul, Canine Social.
That's different. So this one is the 25th on Tuesday.
All right, because the only thing I see is like Wendy said, I'll see you at the JITC meeting. So that's.
So she was talking about Tuesday.
Yeah. So let's just. All right, because Wendy is the JITC SBLY. So. Yeah, when I look in, if I search for JITC in my email, the only thing that comes up is.
Wendy?
Wendy, so.
Okay, we'll put it on your calendar now and I'll make sure that something goes out to everyone as soon as we get off this Zoom meeting.
That's May 25th?
It is.
Let's make.
Yeah, we want to have a good showing if we can, since Daniel will be there.
Yep, I'll stand up meeting. Of course, that's the, the morning I, yeah, we can make that happen.
Awesome.
And that's in where and?
It's in their technology building in the downtown FSCJ. And obviously I'll put that address in there for you as well.
I'm just doing offsite events. You know, this is dedication because I'll be at my beach house that day. So I'll leave early for this.
You and me both. I gotta come from the beach too.
Seven o'clock is what I'll say.
Can you hear me?
Good morning.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Hi Alex, I'm Kathy.
Hey Kathy.
Hi Laura.
Hey Kathy. The acoustics in here are amazing. Does it sound okay though?
It sounds like you're in a church. Yes.
Yeah.
There's a lot of echo. So.
I'm gonna need to like not just allow.
How long am I supposed to be talking for?
Thirtyish.
Okay.
You'll be fine.
I was gonna run through the PowerPoint.
Oh, you do want to share? Kathy, can you make him a co-host then?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I was just gonna run through the Hogan and Laura Street kind of developments going on.
The like the PDF stuff from the?
Yeah.
All right, you're all good. And Gracie, I made you one too.
Great, thank you.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, let's just test the PowerPoint first to make sure you can pull it up, Alex.
I feel like you probably know what you're doing.
I've been on the Zoomer too.
I know. Listen, we have speakers who are on who have no idea what they're doing.
No, I'm sure you know what you're doing, but you.
No, I just said, do you know how to share your screen? And he's like, I, I know what I'm doing.
I have been on Zoom before. Can you guys see this?
Yep. Renee in yet?
No.
Not sure who that is. Okay.
It's probably Renee Pronto.
It is. Yeah. Since we're sitting next to each other, I feel kind of awkward, like giving your whole bio, you're just like bio yourself, like I'll face you, it's all great, you can bio yourself.
Sure.
That's like, and this guy's sitting next to me, blah, 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 blah. I'll do my spiel or whatever, then I can give it to you. You can be like.
I actually think that would be really funny.
You're like slider.
And now it's me, hi.
Laura, you should just act like he's not there at all.
And then he'll just pop in and it'll be like, okay, that's what we're gonna do.
That would be really funny.
Stay over here and then I'm gonna be like, do do do, and then he'll just pop in.
Here, practice slider chair.
Okay, ready?
Is that good? All right.
Yeah, cool.
That's what we'll do. That means I do need to pull up your damn bio. So hold on. Oh, Lord. Gracie, I saw the QA doc. Thank you, by the way.
Okay, cool. I'm not sure.
But right now.
Yeah. Okay, I'm not sure if Ben is gonna man it. I don't know, but I'm on it. So I'll just keep track of the, the questions. Jim, since we don't have an SBLY for this meeting, I'm just gonna throw it over to Laura to introduce Alex.
That's fine. I'll gladly sit here on mute.
Unless you want to do a spiel.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was like, do you want to do anything, Jim? That's what Gracie and I were wondering. Is there anything you want to talk about?
I mean, you don't have to do it right this second, but we do, I mean, we want to highlight you.
I appreciate that.
On the regular.
On the regular? I can, I can take a second chair to Alex today. That's fine.
Jim's like, I'm out. Yeah, Jim, you know what? Just drive on in.
Yeah, why don't you go over there?
Are you at Manifest or you're at home?
I'm not wearing pants.
Yeah. That's the beauty of Zoom. No one is.
Um, over here, we're wearing pants. Sorry. We're not at home.
Julie is liking the fact that I'm awake right now.
How's Julie?
He's good.
Oh, Jim, before we get started, Darren, I'm gonna ask Darren to reach out to you because we want to do kind of a board social get together potentially at Manifest and record some, it's gonna be kind of like a podcast party. Kind of where we'll record some snippets of just different board members saying things and the guys are gonna bring over the gear. So it's all like professional and it sounds really good. So just know that that's gonna be coming at some point. So we'll check availability.
Sure.
Jim, is there, I know y'all are starting to get booked. Are there, are there a lot of dates already secured or is there stuff open?
We don't have anything, like we're booked up through almost August on every Saturday, but.
Like a weekday kind of thing?
Hey Jim, I have a question for you too. Are you able to set up, do you have like a mobile liquor license scenario? Are you able to set up at a, an event? I know you.
I talked to Jill yesterday about it.
Yeah. So that's why I was wondering about Jim, if you able to do that.
It really depends. I mean, we, I can't set up a cash bar anywhere else other than on property, but we can serve alcohol as long as it's an open bar anywhere.
Okay. What does that mean for me, Laura, since you know the situation?
I mean, Jim knows as well. I mean, and Jim can also come in, like with, Jim and I work high end in hand so that that, that it works out if we need to.
Did she talk specifically then about what Arlington's wanting to do or not?
Yes, yes. And I told her that I have a 13 CT license and we can do that.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about offline then.
Like I can do.
I need you to talk to me and tell me everything.
And I can bring Jim in. You know what I mean? That way it's all.
Okay.
As long as it's under Laura, it's cool, but Jim can't be on it.
Yeah.
Right?
Jim can provide people and product and all that.
And I got the license. So we'll figure it out. Happy to do it.
Alex, your bio is very long.
Yeah.
Is this your resume? This is like your.
Brian will provide. Bio to read.
That's cool. Need to know what like the important things are. I mean, there are a lot of things that are important, but.
Kathy, I think we'll wait to let everyone else in until eight o'clock if that's okay with you.
What are you currently doing right now? You are on DBS board. You're on Habitat for Humanity? I don't know what this is. Talk about that later. I didn't know you were on. Fuck, you're on Rotary also. You're too busy. You're busier than I am or than Jim is.
Not entirely sure that's possible, but.
Hey, Brian.
Good morning.
Morning.
Are you in the car? Is that why you don't have video on?
I bet.
Yeah, yeah. I'll be parked in a minute.
You're fine. It's just that. Oh, there it is. I was like, I can't see your sunroof. The highlight of my mornings.
You gotta get out more, Gracie.
Brian.
Good morning. I didn't see who it was, but good morning.
It's Kathy.
Hey, good morning.
And then Kathy, are we good to do breakout sessions too?
Yep, they're in here.
Perfect. I just can't see them on my end. Like I think you as host can see. I can't as a co-host. So that's why I always kind of just double check.
That's fine. Yeah, you know, Amanda and I were talking, we're not sure why there for a little bit, the settings kept getting changed. And I've even reached out to Zoom on that and they don't have an answer for it. It's not like we can lock it down. So I was thinking it was more like a toggle where whoever was the day before doing a Zoom was wiping out the settings of what we had coming up. So that's why we were getting concerned about sending out the credentials too soon, you know, and then having to change it.
So yeah, we, I don't know. That's, it's so strange because Amanda would send out like Zoom invitations to me and Brian, like, like almost like a month or two in advance. And so we always just kind of had them ahead of time. But when, yeah, I don't know why the passcode would change because I feel like all chamber events that are on Zoom all have passcodes. So I don't know why anyone would.
I don't know. I don't know. This one didn't change. So this one stayed the same and I was monitoring it.
Yeah.
There for a little bit. It was kind of creepy and weird. I didn't, I didn't let him in. Oh, you.
Sorry, I did. I just want to double check. He's gonna help with questions.
Oh, yeah. I pulled out the doc.
We have over 90 people that signed up on the signup genius, which is awesome. I'm sure Brian, you are sending the Zoom. Oh, 94.
I was gonna say, I think it's over that now. We got a few this morning, kind of last minute stragglers.
Yeah. So if you're in the car, how does that work? Because I don't know if you're firing out like emails left and right, like.
So I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie. I have a phone, so I have two. And so I have the auto response, like saved as like a quick text. So I can literally just hit reply. It used to be on the signup genius, you had to download whatever, just minor stuff. It doesn't really matter. I just hit reply.
You can do, oh, okay, cool. That's awesome.
Yeah.
I'm glad it's not a ton of extra work because I know we have some, you know, it's Jacksonville. Everyone signs up late for everything, including at 7:58 in the morning.
Did someone just sign up?
We're up to 94.
Just a few minutes ago. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I walked away. I missed that. That's what we're talking about.
Well, good. Then you'll have some people sign up after the event's over.
They can go to YouTube and they can watch it there.
Yeah. Well, I think they just missed the date or something. I'm not really sure. Okay, cool. How are you, Ben?
Great.
Cool. Did you get the document? Do you want to help me tag team questions?
Yeah, just, hey, 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 good morning in there.
I have checked. Sweet.
Hi Ben.
I see Tess, Tess. Oh, hey, hey, hi.
I wish that it came through in different colors.
Like when we type, I, well, we could, in theory, you can pick a color and type in that color only.
Oh, I guess if we all just choose a new color, right?
True.
Or would everyone be, okay.
I'm going hot pink today.
Oh, no.
Feeling whatever. There we go.
Oh, that didn't work.
Sassy? Nice. That I am. It's gonna be fine. Sir pro green. Oh, Benjamin, that's so appropriate. Definitely not going bread and board or Australia or bread and burger blue. Oh my God, the container got dropped last night, you guys. Like, it was the coolest thing.
It's happening.
I know. I like text and photos to like everybody. It was cool thing. And like, it was insane. Like we had ladder truck, fire trucks, between eight o'clock and nine, fire trucks that like blocked off the street because if they dropped the container it would explode. So there was like fire trucks everywhere. It was the coolest thing.
I'm sorry, I'm lost. What, what container are we talking about?
For the bread and burger, because you know, a third concept makes a lot of sense.
Okay, guys, it's eight o'clock. Go ahead and start letting people in.
Cool. Everybody ready? All right.
Hey, everyone. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's good to see you all. We have over 90 people that have signed up for the Zoom this morning. So yeah, huge group. We're very excited. So we're just gonna wait a couple minutes before we just get started on my, my brief remarks before we, before we get the formal program started.
Morning, Gracie.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and get us started. And Kathy, if you'll just be able to watch the chat and let in those stragglers a little bit after eight. I know I'm on my second cup of coffee. So, um, thank you so much for joining us this morning. My name is Gracie Semeninger and I am the president of Downtown Council of the Jack's Chamber. I want to remind everyone that we are recording the session today and today's guest speaker is Alex Afakis of JWB Real Estate Capital. The recording will be available for our new Downtown Council podcast. And if you haven't already searched the Downtown Council on your podcast provider, please do so and hit subscribe. I want to give a brief overview for those of you that are new to us. We are one of eight chamber councils and simply put Downtown Council cares about the future of our city. We represent Jacksonville's business community, including major corporations, growing businesses and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that greater Jacksonville and downtown will thrive and prosper. Our meetings offer a brave space to discuss local topics and we look forward to different perspectives on what makes our city great and ways to make it better. We also pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top tier speakers to our meetings. At this time, I'd like to doubt, to recognize all Downtown Council Board members. Will you please wave to our attendees this morning? That means you, Bruce. Wave.
Sorry, I can't quite reach the wave button.
Or you can just wave. All Downtown Council Board members are volunteers, including myself. So we would love your feedback on programming for events, any of that. So please reach out to any of us and let us know your feedback on our programs. At this time, I would like to recognize all new members to Downtown Council, Mr. Thomas Lee of Lee and Kate's Glass, Mr. Daniel Nun of Nelson Mullins Riley and Scarborough, and Chris Brown of the Empowered Kitchen. We do not have a spotlight speaker for today's meeting, which means extra time with our keynote speaker. So now I'm gonna turn it over to our programs officer, Laura Edgcombe, to introduce today's presenter. Laura?
Good morning, everybody. Happy Friday. Appreciate y'all joining us this morning. Just like Gracie said, I am the program director for the Downtown Council and in real life, I am the director of catering, events and community for the Bread and Board, Bread Board Provisions, Australia-Gossina and the Bread and Burger. And the only reason I list all four of them right now is because as most of you know, we are ribbon cutting next week and there's just a lot going on downtown, which is really exciting. And actually why I'm super excited today for our speaker, this gentleman is very, very, very active in downtown and the group of which he represents, JWB is also very, very, very active downtown. And so I've gotten some a lot of time with our speaker and very much hold a lot of respect for him for, and for JWB for putting their money where their mouth is and actually coming into downtown. I'm gonna give a little quick bio because it's always important to see what else is going on in the community. And so our speaker, Alex Afakis, is the founder and president of JWB Real Estate Companies, the top residential home buyer and infill builder in Northeast Florida, pursuing over 3,000 properties since 2016. Alex has proven to be a real estate visionary, creating and implementing the build to rent model, which earned them a spot on the front page of the Wall Street Journal in 2013. They, they're active in crowdfunding efforts, which have raised over $40 million to date, as well as spearheading a successful investment in the areas of Springfield, Brooklyn, Murray Hill, and of course downtown, right? All before it was cool to do so. JWB was doing so. Currently, JWB owns over 900 infill lots in Northeast Florida. A hundred of them are in or really close to downtown, such as the core Springfield, Brooklyn, those kinds of areas, all the areas that we represent here at council. And they manage over 3,700 single family rental properties in Northeast Florida. Some of the fun stuff that really makes us proud to have people like this in Jacksonville, in addition to doing all the great for development in Jacksonville. Alex also sits on the Board for Habitat for Humanity. He's on the Downtown Vision Board, which we always throw lots of love to. He's part of Rotary Club and he's also a Jacksonville Chamber of Commerce Board of Governors. With that, I'm very excited because today here, clearly I'm not at home. I don't have my silly backdrop on. I mean, that's because I'm at one of the development properties and I have a gentleman with me who wants to talk to you guys.
Sup, everybody? Glad to be here. Really appreciate the, the chamber for having us on. I'm gonna rename myself here. I'm not Laura. And I'm excited to talk to you guys about downtown. Right now, we're actually in the Federal Reserve Building, which is just north of Sweet Pete's on Hogan Street in downtown. It's one of the first projects that we're gonna be starting as part of a, a small mastery development. So we basically got three buildings here. And I'll talk about that in depth a little bit later. Just kind of wanted to start with, with some of the, you know, the reasons why we're investing in downtown, you know, as, as Laura said, you know, a lot of our core business is really in the suburbs. So we buy 700 to 1,000 properties a year. We renovate existing homes. We build new homes. We manage single family homes, mostly in the south side, Arlington, west side, north side. But I started getting involved through the chamber actually, in the chamber leadership trip a couple years ago and seeing what other cities had done with their downtowns and revitalizing them and how much of an impact that had over the entire city. And, and we believe at JWB, and I know the chamber believes too, that to have, you know, you can't be a suburb of nowhere to really, really grow Jacksonville and continue to bring great jobs here and to bring young talent here. We need to have a thriving urban vibrant downtown. And so, or the last couple of years really started getting passionate about it. And then about two years ago, we really started investing in the downtown core. And, and now we, we own a significant number of properties and we're hoping to start our first projects, you know, in the coming month or two. So, and it's just really, you know, downtown, people in Jacksonville, I think are kind of jaded because we've been hearing about downtown for 30 years and it, you know, it, it, a lot has happened actually. Like people say nothing happened downtown. That, I mean, obviously I think on the downtown council, we hopefully know that's not true, that there's been a lot of, a lot of activity just in the last six or seven years. And we're really just hoping to be a piece and, and, you know, continue to push that. We do have a very supportive administration, a very supportive city council and an amazing DIA now that we didn't have 10 years ago, that we didn't, you know, have 30 years ago for sure. So I think that's the biggest thing where, you know, downtown development does take public investment. The numbers, the reason that downtown hasn't been developed yet, just the easiest reason is because the numbers don't work for developers to come in and do projects that can't make a return on their capital. And every downtown that has been revitalized has had a significant amount of public investment in order to spur the development. And then as development happens, rents go up, the desirability of downtown goes up and those incentives can burn off. And, and it took a while for Jacksonville to, to start really supporting some of these developments, but the administration is 100% on board for, for putting money into downtown, which is critical to making it happen. I'm gonna go through a PowerPoint in a second to kind of just run down some of the projects, but I wanted to talk about kind of like our, our four pillars that we see as being really important for downtown development. And, and you know, our pillars, but like are the assumptions we're making as well. And the first, the first, you know, part of our thesis about why we believe in downtown is that we think there's an incredible amount of latent demand for downtown. So, and we saw this like through Jack's River Jams. So the, the Jack's River Jam series that DVI did that Laura, you know, spearheaded was incredibly successful. There's seven to 10,000 people every Thursday in April down here to have to watch a concert series. And then everyone flooded into downtown and for one night we had a vibrant, you know, urban downtown. It was amazing. The Barnett is another example. So Steve Atkins finished the Barnett. It's 100% occupied and he has a waiting list for residents and they're getting over two bucks a foot in rent, which is really like the key number where residential starts working downtown. So, you know, the, the build it and they will come. We believe that in downtown because we think that people already want to come down there. We just need to give them more things to do and more places to live. So that, that's the first, the first thing that we believe. The second thing is that clustering development is critical. You could do 10 giant projects in downtown and if you spread them out onto the far corners of downtown, it just wouldn't have that big of an impact. You take 10 projects and you do them all next to each other and it could have an incredible impact. And you'll see that through the development that we're doing. And we think that's really important. The next thing, clustering development is critical. And the, the next thing is that mixed use is critical. We've had this debate in downtown forever. Oh, should residential come first? Oh, should, should retail come first? What do we need? And you need them both because if you build a bunch of residential and you don't create, you don't build things for those residents to do, you're gonna have decreasing residential demand. Right now, the residential demand in downtown is incredibly high and the occupancy is incredibly high. I mean, it's 97, 98%. But if you built 1,000 new units and you didn't build anything cool for those residents.
Morning.
Over time that. Hey, Andy, you're off mute.
Yes.
Somebody muted him. And we'll talk about one of Andy's projects in a second. So we think mixed use is critical and all of our projects will be mixed use to some capacity. And then the last thing is the, the more the merrier. There, so we don't see any competition in downtown. We think that, you know, I am actively trying to recruit other developers to come to downtown, other investors in Jacksonville to buy things downtown. And so there's this sense of camaraderie around those that are developing in downtown that we're, we're working together, trying to get a common vision, working with the DIA, who's been doing an amazing job kind of setting that vision and the parameters. And we, we are just trying to help everyone who wants to do anything in downtown be successful. So people are like, oh, do you think the shipyards is gonna hurt the core? No, no, we need the shipyards. We need Shaw and the Jaguars to build a vibrant entertainment district over by the stadium. And we need the district to be successful and we need the core to be successful. Like everything is important and only helps everything else going on downtown. So those are kind of the, the, the four things that, that we believe that on our developments are necessary to be successful. And I'm, if, if anyone has any questions, I hate talking for like a half hour straight. So if there is any questions, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and answer them as they go. Okay, we can, we can do a Q and A later. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Hopefully this will work. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Hopefully this will work. Can you guys see my screen? All right. So just, so the development update we're doing right now is on Hogan and Laura Street. It's not just going to be our projects. It's going to be all the development we see on Hogan and Laura Street, which is one of those areas that where we are clustering development. Something else, you know, as part of clustering development, we think it's critical that you, you build off of the, the strengths and the existing infrastructure that's there. So for instance, you could buy a ton of land in LaVilla and cluster a brand-new development that where there's not much around. And, and while we're not, we are doing some of that too. We don't, the, the best way to be successful is to work off of existing strengths, like the whole, and we think that that Hogan and Laura corridor, which already has a lot of first-floor retail, still has a lot of existing historical buildings, is, is really important. So this neighborhood up here in red, where, where I'm actually sitting right now, we've kind of called the North Core. So you've got the core, which is all the, the high-rise buildings here. So you've got the Landing, Bank of America Tower, Wells Fargo Tower, Bank of America Tower, Everbank. So this is the traditional core. And then just north of that, you've got James Holden Johnson Park right here and, and City Hall right here. And so currently, I am sitting in this building right here, the Federal Reserve Building. And there are four developers that have bought a significant amount of property right here, which is the, that, that key of about the clustering development. So you can see here, this is an aerial of the development, a very professionally done aerial of the, of the development that we're talking about in this neighborhood. So the five and six is where we are right now. So JWB owns everything in, in orange. So this is the Sweet Pete's 218 Church Federal Reserve Development. Seven, eight and nine are Augustine Developments, the Eye Life Building, and the Ambassador Hotel, and then the new multifamily going around there. JWB also bought the Porterhouse Mansion that we're currently renovating into office space and a first-floor restaurant. Three, so we are planning on doing a new multifamily, a mixed-use building. So it'll be, be, you know, five floors of residential on top of a floor of commercial and a floor of parking. Eleven, Jim, Jim and Ellen Wiss own this land that they are planning on doing a multifamily building on. JWB bought this 22,000 square foot warehouse from First Baptist Church. And we're planning on doing event venue, food hall, that sort of thing in that building. And then over here on this block, where we've assembled most of this block for future development. We're not sure exactly what it's going to be, but, but assembled that block for future development. So when you take this, this block and whole, I mean, you're talking close to 1,000 residential units, 150,000 square feet of retail. This, this seven-block area would be denser than downtown Miami at completion, which conceivably could be in two or three years. So this just kind of goes to show you that, that clustering, that development. So hopefully by now, everyone has heard of the Emerald Trail, been in the news a bunch recently because it's hopefully getting funded as part of the new gas tax. Please, please tell your council people to vote yes on the gas tax. We have a ton of infrastructure needs in Jacksonville. A lot downtown, but a lot outside of downtown. And, and a yes on the gas tax will allow Jacksonville to, to get a lot of those infrastructure needs. And it is really critical to downtown. The U2C, I mean, have, there's a lot of people that, that have different views in the skyway, but something that every other city has done is have, have transit and a mass transit and urban transit. So we do think that's important. JTA has a lot of great, smart people. They, they will figure out the right way to implement the U2C with their board, with their stakeholders, input from the community. And that plan is going to happen over the next 10 to 20 years. So that headline number of $300 million going into the skyway and people are freaking out, that's, we, we need to trust JTA to do the right things with the skyway over the next 20 years. And that's definitely not a reason to, to not vote yes on the gas tax. One of the most important reasons is the Emerald Trail. So currently, the gas tax will fund about $130 million of the Emerald Trail. That'll be basically the whole entire trail. Emerald Trail is an interconnected network of trails going through downtown, including the Riverwalk, going through Brooklyn, through LaVilla. And one of those trail elements goes straight from the Riverwalk all the way down Hogan Street to Clutho Park in Springfield. And this is that element of the trail. It's already under design. Because I'm a property owner on the trail, we're helping to do that design right now. It's going to take out one of the travel lanes on Hogan Street. So this is Sweet Pete's right here, this building, showing the trail going in front of Sweet Pete's down Hogan Street. And, you know, trails are shown to have basically an 11-on-1 return on your money. So for every dollar you put in the trails, the city gets $11 back. The Belt Line in Atlanta is the easiest example of this. The people who are designing and developing the Emerald Trail here had a huge impact and did a lot of the Belt Line in Atlanta, which was monumentally successful. So this is really important to, to downtown. This interconnected network of trails around downtown and going into a lot of the underserved neighborhoods around downtown, increasing mobility for those neighborhoods. Here is this, the first project, which we're hopefully breaking ground on in, in a month or two. So we already got approved for, for our DIA incentives on this project. So this is Sweet Pete's, the Federal Reserve Building, which where we're currently standing. And, sorry, sorry. And 218 Church Street. So what we're doing in this development is the Federal Reserve will have a restaurant on the first floor that will access this courtyard. So the courtyard will be outdoor seating and outdoor bar. 218 Church Street will have two restaurants on the first floor and the half-level basement and 24 residential units above. And then Sweet Pete's is going to be existing, so Sweet Pete's will be in there. And then we'll eventually put a restaurant back into the first floor of Sweet Pete's over on the, the southern side of the building where Candy Appletat was. Here's just an aerial kind of showing the courtyard. So this is the bar. You'll have a big, long entryway going into the 218 Church Street building. A little water feature in the back, and then a bunch of outdoor seating. Right here, this is actually an entrance down into the basement of the Federal Reserve. So the basement of the Federal Reserve, we have envisioned being a speakeasy or wine bar that'll have direct access from the street. So these plans, so our building, we should be getting our building permit in the next week or two. We've already been fully approved by the National Park Service for our historic tax credit. The DIA has already approved our funding. And we're waiting on city council approval for the, for the incentive funding. But, so this project is, is really ready to go. We, we were bid out. Alden White is our contractor on it. Where, where construction costs have increased pretty dramatically in the last seven months. So we're, we're working to get our construction costs down, but, but we're planning on getting started on this, like I said, in the next month or two. And, and we're, we're really excited about it. Here's a rendering of the courtyard, what the courtyard will look like. We're going, we're going really high-end with this development. The Federal Reserve Building is, is kind of modeled after the Oxford Exchange in Tampa, if any of you have ever been there. And it's, it's a pretty incredible building. I'll show you in a second. So here's a, here's the area where I'm just going to stop sharing right now, since we're actually in the building. So you can see, so that is, that wall right there is facing Hogan Street. And then you can turn around, and now I'm facing Hogan Street, and you guys are all facing Julia Street. But you can see, you've got these incredible coffered ceilings. There's a mezzanine in the back there. And, and so this is a space that will be event space, weddings, corporate events, hopefully a lot of Downtown Council events in, in the future. The upstairs is another, another room. It's similar to this, but it has actually taller ceilings. The ceilings are 18 feet high. Don't have, you don't have the great coffered ceilings up there, but it's two floors where one, one could be a chamber event, the other one could be a rotary event, or you could have a wedding, get married down here, and then go upstairs for, you know, your, your dancing and, and dinner and all that. So definitely really excited about, about this project. Let me go ahead and share my screen again, finish running through this. So yeah, that, the picture on the right is what the upstairs looks like. All right. So the, JWB also owns the Porterhouse Mansion. So this is the Porterhouse Mansion. See if I have a picture, a picture to the front. But it's a, it was a house that was built in 1902. Incredible architecture, won a preservation award in 1983. KBJ occupied the building for a long time. And so we're going to do a restaurant, kind of a Savannah-style restaurant on the first floor. It's a half-level basement of this building that'll also have an outdoor stairway that goes to this courtyard where there will be outdoor seating. The yellow is, denotes where we will be planning on building a mixed-use building. The green would be the first-floor retail, so we'll put first-floor retail facing Church Street and Ashley Street that will have access, you know, the Ash, the Church Street will have access to this courtyard too. And so that probably won't start until middle to end of next year, but something that we're, we're currently in conceptual design on right now. Did want to mention, so this project, so one, one thing about this is that, you know, so this is about a $19 million project total. The DIA gave us $8.7 million in incentives, $7 million grant, and $1.7 million in a, in a low-interest loan. So almost half of the project is being, you know, paid for by the city. These historic buildings, the numbers don't work unless you get pretty close to that level of incentive, especially a building like 218 Church Street where it's literally falling down. This is a building that everyone thought would be demolished. We think it's really, really important to save the historic buildings that are left in Jacksonville. And that long-term, you, that you. Oh, shit. My piece, my, my computer just told me that the battery's running low. So we'll, we'll get Laura to, I'll have to hop on her computer here in a second. So we'll try to rush through this PowerPoint. But, so what I was saying is, so $19 million project, you have $8.7 million in incentives. JWB's return, our leveraged return, is only 3% on this project in year one. So we're putting over $3 million of our own equity into the project, and we're only making 3% on that money. Any real estate developer will tell you that is really bad. Most projects, you're looking for 15 to 25% return. So year one, it is an extremely low return. We, we're making the bet that over the long term, we'll be successful, downtown will be revitalized, and these buildings will be worth a lot more, and that's how we can make our money. But also, there's, you know, we're really, there's, there's a little bit of a, of a, you know, social impact component to this investing. You know, it, it's about making downtown great, making Jacksonville great, having my kids move back here after they graduate college. And so there's, there's a little bit of that, accepting a lower return because we're really just passionate about making downtown a great place. This is the half-level basement in the, in the Porterhouse Mansion, which we think will be a, a restaurant eventually. You can see it's kind of Savannah style with those half-level windows, a lot of natural light. This is the Independent Life and Ambassador Hotel project. So if you can, you can see here, this is 218 Church Street, the project we were just talking about. The Independent Life Building and all this block are owned by Augustine Development Group. Independent Life is going to be 140 residential units, first-floor retail with a grocery store, urban grocery store. Ambassador Hotel, we're going to, is going to be a, a brand-new hotel. And then they're going to build a big garage and multifamily on about 140 units on the back half of that block. And this is, this is already, this is in for permit. So, and also is completely, has all, Augustine has all of their incentives. So this project should also start in the next three to six months. Top of my list. This is just an example of what the multifamily, you know, just wondering what that could look like. The warehouse, so this is that 331 Ashley Warehouse that we purchased. Here's an interior picture. It's just a giant warehouse that, like I said, could be great for event venue, food hall, some sort of use that we're still, we're still planning on, hoping to, you know, deliver sometime in, in 2023. Early, early 2023, late 2022. And then we're, we're, have acquired most of this block here. This is a picture of Jim Wiss's multifamily, just a conceptual rendering at this point. I don't know when, I mean, they might not start for a year or two, but he's planning to do a 200 unit multifamily there. Jones Furniture Building, which was the blue, this is the corner lot project. So Andy Allen is, you know, looking at building a new construction on the corner here, renovating Jones. Be about 100 residential units and, you know, 700, 7, 600 square feet of first-floor retail. If you go down Laura Street, so now we're about two blocks south of where we're currently sitting, you've got the Laura Street Trio where Steve Atkins has gotten his incentives. So the city granted him about $25 million to renovate the Laura Street Trio into 145-unit Marriott Autograph Hotel. And this is the Marble Bank Building, which is going to be a full-service restaurant. Maybe one of the only buildings in Jacksonville that's, that is, you know, more incredible than the Federal Reserve Building, but the Marble Bank Building inside is just, it's amazing. This is a 170 Hogan Street. It's owned by Ash Properties. So they are working, it's nothing imminent, but they've been, been kicking around ideas to, to redevelop that property. 120 Adam Street, which is where DeReal Ting is, a new developer bought this building. And we've been, been working with them, trying to help them figure out that development. They just hired an owners rep who really understands downtown development, so we're really looking forward to that happening. The ViStar Garage is getting built. They should be starting in, in, what, the next couple of months? ViStar has been an incredible stakeholder for downtown. I mean, the development they've been doing, you guys have to come check out Estrella Casino. I mean, Laura has been on fire the past couple of months. And, and, and Dwayne and Jonathan over at the Bread and Board have just been doing some amazing things. And so ViStar, what they did is, is really just went super high design on this garage. They did first-floor retail. You know, a lot of the garages downtown are detriments to downtown development. This garage will be a huge benefit for downtown development. You can see where they've done the retail on the corner on Laura Street and on Main Street. This is a picture from Estrella Casino at the, the rooftop. This is, is, is Bread and Board's project. And, I mean, if you haven't been up there, what's, May 27th?
Yes, next Thursday.
It is just absolutely what we need in downtown. Really, really excited for that, that project, and it's already built. So the people, a lot of this stuff, people are like, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll believe it when it happens. Well, this one is, is, has already, it's done. Hoping to get some retail on, on the first floor of the Wells Fargo Building. We all know what's going on with the Landing, so the Landing is becoming Riverfront Plaza. You can see on this, on this picture, kind of what it is, the landing will be, where there'll be two building pads on the back half, and the rest of it will be a high-end urban park. The city's planning on spending 12 to 15 million dollars on this park, which is what we need. I mean, I would say what you want about if you feel the landing should have been torn down or not, but this is going to be a plan that will set up this Hogan Laura Street corridor for long-term success. Opening Laura Street up to, opening the, the area up, so where you can see straight down the river from Laura Street. Also, the floating docks that have been damaged, were damaged by Irma three or four years ago, are now almost completely rebuilt, so the crane is way over on the corner of the property. So you can currently pull up your boat and, and go to the Landing, the, the Riverfront Plaza, and to Estrella Casino, which is right here. So, May 27th, bring your boats, come have a drink on the rooftop.
Please.
There's a lot of other waterfront activation going on. A lot of people don't know this, but there's actually five transient, transient means, you know, you can pull up your boat, park, go to a restaurant. So five docks that are funded and designed that should get built in the next few months for, for boaters. So Parket Downtown, those, you know, the sort of the red circles are those locations. Also, the old courthouse site, the city is going to be funding, they, they've got a conceptual design and will be funding a new marina. So in front of where the Fordham Bay Development is, next Hyatt, there'll be a new marina there. The Berkman Marina was just purchased by a developer who's, who's looked, who also owns a, a pad to do a restaurant there. So, you know, we have not taken advantage of our riverfront in a long time, but there are currently plans to do so, and not just plans, like an idea. I mean, these are designed and funded plans to, to activate the riverfront. There are two parks that are also designed and funded. So the Times Union Center for the Performing Arts. You guys can see, this is, the Landing is right here. So this is a park that's in front of the Times Union Center, also designed and funded, that will be celebrating Jacksonville's musical heritage. There'll be musical instruments out there, like big ones that kids can play on and, and make music out of. You know, going from Delius, James Holden Johnson, Lynyrd Skynyrd, Limp Bizkit. So the whole musical heritage of Jacksonville is going to be celebrated in that park, designed and funded. Hopefully, we'll start construction this year. Related, across the river, Related is doing a 300-unit multifamily with a restaurant on the river and redoing that marina at the old River City Brewing Site. They, they have gotten approved by DIA for their incentives. They're going to city council. Related is a big name in urban development. They, they're a well, well-regarded national developer, so having them come here, I mean, it, it lends some gravitas where other developers will look at Jacksonville because they know Related is here. So really excited to have that development happen. You know, I would have liked a bigger restaurant that was on the marina, but you, you can't always get exactly what you want. And, and, and don't let perfect, you know, impede great progress. So we, we're definitely excited for this project. And then there's another park right here, in between the Related Development and Friendship Fountain, that is designed and funded, that's going to celebrate the, the, you know, discovery of Jacksonville by Rebeau in the 1500s. And so another great public space. And so another great public space, and then as, you know, I think we, most of you guys probably know, Mosh is probably going to be moving to the North Bank. So this will be a future civic use, you know, yet to be determined. And that's that, so just run through really quick Hogan and Laura Street Development. I'm just kind of giving you an example why we're really excited about downtown, what my computer does. So any questions?
Yes, there's a ton of questions.
All right, well, moderate.
Okay, I'm gonna moderate. So until Alex's thing dies, we're gonna kind of do this tag team because I've got, there's gonna be feedback and reverb and a whole other thing. So first of all, let me thank you very much, because there's a lot of information and a lot to get through, and it's really nice to hear not only what y'all are doing, but also what else is happening downtown. I think it's important that people recognize that everyone is kind of working together, and that it's not just, oh, look at me, look at me, it's more like, look at all of this, look at all this. Alex has been doing, JWB's been doing these tours where they bring in people who are vested in the city, who are other developers, who are people who have funding, who have, say, who just have been here a long time. He's kind of been highlighting and showing off downtown, it's been a lot of fun. That's why, they end up at the restaurant, usually at the end of the tour, and so it's kind of like the aha moment, which has been really, it's actually very wonderful, and there's a lot of, from both ViStar and the Bread and Board, we're very proud to be like, you're, you're, you're in stop, so thank you for that one.
A shining jewel of downtown.
Unless it's really windy, and then it's like a wind tunnel, but it's okay. But, but to that, like, it's just, it's, it's amazing, right? When we talk about the different, when everyone says, you, you said this in the beginning, like, there's nothing going on downtown, or there's nowhere to live downtown, or there's nowhere to shop downtown. Like, it's so close, and it's not like ten years ago when everyone was talking about it. It really is like, permits are done.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, like, even as we exist, that's not true, but the, there is a tremendous amount of development that is about to come out of the ground.
And look, like that crane watch moment, right? As people say. So what then, I'm gonna go through some of the questions, and I'm gonna go off screen because our lovely president goes and, and she finds and puts them into a small dock. So, um, I'm just gonna kind of start, and we're gonna go. As everyone knows, if you have questions, put them in the, in the chat on the side, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that earlier. I usually have a whole spiel when I do this, but anyway, all that to be said, I was excited for you to start talking. Okay, so Karen Jansen asks, is there a plan for green space to allow new residents and pets a place to play, exercise, socialize? Outside of like Riverfront Plaza, those kinds of things, is there any other green space?
Yeah, so, I mean, green space is critical, especially along the river, so parks are critical. We do have a lot of parks downtown. I think the, the, it's, it's gonna be important to really maintain them in, in a way that will, we need to make them urban vibrant spaces, not just, you know, a piece of grass. And, and so they're, the, the DIA and the administration are really on board to, to do that. I think Riverfront Plaza is gonna be the first one, and, and you, when you see the designs for Riverfront Plaza, I think everyone's gonna be, gonna be really excited. And so I know that, you know, the DIA is working with DuPont to do a, a study of the entire riverfront, and to figure out what we need to make our riverfront fully inclusive, and, and a driver of, of development. And so, you know, I was actually, I met with DuPont yesterday, and really excited to see what, what comes out of that. But the, the way that you think about the green spaces downtown is that each green space can have a different use, and will be attractive to a different demographic, to a different person, a different phase of their life, so that there is a place for everyone downtown. So, so I don't know exactly where it'll be, what it's gonna look like, but I promise you, there'll be somewhere for dogs to, to go, to go run around and, and play.
Parking, that's a big one, there's lots of questions about parking, so let's talk about parking. What are your thoughts on parking? What are your thoughts on what needs to happen?
I don't really care about parking, you know, and people that, that really, you know, right now, so for instance, the Barnett, the Barnett's parking is almost two blocks away. It is fully occupied and has a waiting list. So, you know, the people that want to live in an urban walkable environment will deal with parking. And, and it's not gonna be perfect, you're not gonna have parking in front of where you want to go to eat all the time. You're not gonna have parking in a garage in your building all the time, and that's okay. So we have parking solutions for all of our projects. So for two eighteen Church Street and the Federal Reserve, we own the Porter House Mansion block, which is right there. So that's got about a hundred spaces that we'll be using for parking. So if you want to come to the courtyard, if you don't, if you're not already walking from somewhere you live or work, you'll have to park a block away. We are gonna do valet out front, so I think that's another big thing that, that can help. But, so we have parking solutions for all of our developments, but parking is overthought of in Jacksonville, in my opinion, when it, when it comes to downtown development, because everywhere else in Jacksonville, there's, there's a parking requirement, you know? Well, to do a retail development in Nocti, you need a minimum of two spaces per thousand square feet. And in downtown, there is no parking requirements, because there shouldn't be, the market will drive it. And the people that, that are going to come downtown and live downtown will deal with not having a spot exactly in front of where they want to go, because the value of the urban walkable vibrant area will, will, you know, be enough to overcome that. That's our view on, on parking and what we've seen work in other downtowns. So stop asking me questions about parking.
Well, but it's a big thing, I think it's a mindset, though. I do, I definitely think it's a mindset. And this, kind of, someone asked a question, and I'm gonna take what Gracie asked, and then kind of stem from it. So Gracie asked, what, like, when do you think we'll start building real momentum in downtown development? And to that, Gracie, that's a great question. But I add to that, like, once upon a time, and for some of you on this call you were part of, there used to be a movement, it was called Downtown is on Fire. It was something that we did through DVI. Before Jake's time, it was when Tori Lawrence was there, and we did this, Terry Lawrence, and we did this huge initiative to try to like, how do we get Mandarin to understand why it's important to be downtown? How do we get the beaches to understand why downtown's important? From y'all's, like, from your perspective, from a developer, like, are you, how are you reaching outside of this core or those of us who are joining a council call or whatnot to, to understand what's going on and why it's important?
And kind of going back to the first thing that we believe, that there's a huge latent demand for this, we don't think that we need to convince people to come downtown. We think if you give them a, a great, a great outdoor bar, restaurant venue with a great experience and great food, they're gonna come down for it. And, I mean, people, Riverside is, is packed, and rents are incredibly high there. And, and, and you, you have parking issues in Riverside, you have issues with, 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 you know, vagrancy and panhandling in Riverside, you have, like, all those things, but people go there because there's fun stuff to do. And I just think that, I mean, Calford is a great example, that Calford's been massively successful, you know, because there was a demand for it. The, the River Jam Series is a great example. So, so we, we don't think we have to convince people to come downtown. We just think that we have to, to build a great space that's gonna attract people, and then market it the right way, and people will come. And, and then they'll tell their friends, and, and it'll start changing that perspective. I mean, Jacksonville's got one point five million people. You don't have to convince all of them, and to be honest, not everyone in Jacksonville needs to want to come downtown to make downtown successful. But we think there is a tremendous amount of people in Jacksonville that do want to see downtown succeed, and do want to live in a place that's a vibrant, walkable downtown. Right now, people think they have to go to other cities to get that, they love going to other cities, they love going to Savannah. We've kind of just assumed we're not gonna get that here, and that's just not true. So I think people would rather, you know, drive twenty minutes to downtown than two hours to Savannah. We just gotta, gotta build that here.
I do love Savannah, but this is true. I would like it to be in our backyard instead, a hundred percent.
Should we cut out?
Yeah, I think you might be dying. Oh, but I'm frozen.
Hey, guys, we can hear you, your screen's just frozen, so maybe we can switch to Laura's computer.
Well, except for that my, it's because our internet is also, hold please.
This is, this is the problem about having a Zoom in a building that has no power.
Okay, we're now online, so hold on, though, because from an internet standpoint, I need to switch internet, so give me a second.
We can still hear you, but again, you're frozen.
Okay. Can you guys, are we good? Welcome back. Okay, hold on, all right, can y'all hear us? Yeah, okay, good, okay, perfect. Okay, so, um, to, so kind of going off what Alex was saying, so, the Jacksonville, John Singleton asks, Alex, in the Jacksonville Business Journal, you've mentioned the housing market frenzy could calm if demand goes down, and I don't see that hopefully happening. Instead, could you, could downtown housing stock be created to boost a supply? I'm gonna read that.
Yeah. Yes, I think that new housing downtown will boost, obviously, any new housing will increase supply. You know, the, the housing downtown is gonna be beyond like, more expensive than most of the housing in Jacksonville. To make downtown successful, downtown residential successful, you need to get over two bucks a foot in rent. So I don't think downtown housing is, is a solution to an affordable housing issue, or, but any, any new inventory will help ease the housing crunch that we're seeing right now. So easy answer, yes, although it's gonna be slightly different housing than, than the majority of the housing that we need in Jacksonville to slow this giant inventory crunch that we have right now.
Well, I'm with that, with the new announcement of Dun Bradstreet coming in and bringing a gazillion people. Five hundred employees, or five thousand? Hundred employees, like, that's five hundred house, or five hundred houses in theory, that are just gonna be eaten up. Like, it's, it's, it's wonderful, and it's amazing, but I do think that, to your point, it's going, and in thought and theory, I know they haven't picked their spot yet, but hopefully they come downtown. Fingers crossed they come downtown, that would make us all very happy. Okay, so Nigel from Family Foundation, with the proposed relocation of Mosh, what's gonna happen to the current space? You kind of said you're not really sure, but are there any efforts by developers to incorporate affordable housing in the multifamily? Oh, and she also asked, are there any efforts for the developers to incorporate affordable housing, which you kind of spoke to? But do you hear any rumblings? Do you have any idea what's gonna happen at the Mosh space? Like, that building, that building is really cool, so, a community center, I like, I mean, are you hearing anything?
So what I've heard is that it's, it's gonna stay, you know, city-owned, something that's for the whole community, so it, it won't become a private development, but don't, I, I don't, I've not heard what it will be. And I, I think there'll probably be some community meetings and that sort of thing. It would be my guess, I have no idea on that. To speak about affordable housing, you know, Jacksonville has actually done a pretty good job getting some affordable housing built in downtown compared to other downtowns. So, I mean, Best Core has, has built four or five affordable housing projects in downtown right now that are all, you know, completely full and have waiting lists on them. And I, I think it's critical to build affordable housing in downtown to make it successful. You know, affordable housing in downtown is built primarily through, through, you know, the low-income housing tax credit, government subsidized programs. And, and we think that Best Core's done a great job of that, and that, you know, the more affordable housing that we can get built in downtown, until the market picks up and makes it even harder to, you know, use the low-income housing tax credit to build affordable housing, is really important. You know, we, at JWB, we are huge proponents of affordable housing. We really think that affordable housing needs to be thought of as infrastructure. So just like you need water and sewer in your neighborhood, you need, every neighborhood needs to have affordable housing in it, and it's not, you know, there is still kind of a stigma out there that affordable housing is a bad thing or brings down neighborhood values, and that's been proven with many studies over the years to just show to not be true. And actually, it becomes a drag on property values if you don't have affordable housing in your neighborhood, because the people that, that need to, to work in your community have to live farther away, and actually drives up a lot of other costs, and has a lot, there's a lot of other collateral damage to not having affordable housing. So we are huge proponents of affordable housing. Just the, the private sector development that will be happening in downtown, in order for the numbers to work, we have to get market rents above two dollars a foot. And that's why downtowns, by and large, across the country, thriving downtowns are not affordable at a market rate level. And that's why you need to plan on the front end to build affordable housing through, like, the stuff that Best Core's doing.
That's interesting, I, I never really thought of it that way. Anyway, sorry. So this one, of course, you kind of touched on it when you were talking about the Emerald Trail, but Bruce Foraker asked, how close, like, how close to the U two, U two C route are most of the projects? And how important is it to your downtown projects to have public transit in general close by?
We think public transit is extremely important. We, we are supportive of the U two C for sure. I mean, the idea of taking the Skyway and bringing it down to grade and expanding it into the neighborhoods around downtown, we think is only going to increase vibrancy of all those other neighborhoods and downtown. So definitely supportive of it, you know, there's, there, we're basically, here where we're sitting right now is in between two stops. So you've got the stop that was at the old Rosa Parks Bus Station, and you've got the stop in, in James Holden Plaza Park, it's like right there. So, so we think that's a big help for these developments, and, and definitely supportive of the, the U two C. And, and just really, really trusting JTA, I mean, that over there is amazing, their board is amazing, at figuring out how, the best way to implement the U two C and public transit in Jacksonville over the long term. But we, we do need that it's gonna take public funds, and, and are definitely supportive of the gas tax and the U two C.
Two questions that kind of go hand in hand. We're gonna ask the first one, because it's, it's one, several grocer, Bill Hoff asked, hey, Alex, there are several grocery markets planned as part of different downtown developments. In addition to the Harveys that already exist, how many grocery markets you think are like realistic and sustainable? And, and that, so like, so Bread and Board's gonna have provisions, right? We're gonna have milk, cheese, a whole bunch of local items. If someone forgot milk, they can come grab milk from us. We're not a grocery store, but we have, we have the essentials, right? There's rumor there's an actual grocery store coming in. How many grocery stores can downtown have if we haven't even been able to have one in, ever?
Yeah, I don't know the, the real answer to that, how many grocery stores can downtown support? But I think that a, a couple, as long as they're doing different things. So like, what Laura's talking about at Provisions, it's not a grocery store, but it's, there's a, there's a, you can go in and grab a bunch of different things. You know, the, the grocery store that, from what I understand, is gonna be going in at the Eye Life Building right behind us, is gonna be smaller, ten thousand square feet, kind of urban grocery store, small format. And then if, you know, as part of Fordham Bay, they did a, a larger one. I, I think that, that downtown could support that. So I'm not a grocery store developer, so I'm gonna let them figure out how many they can support. I do know that we need, we need some, at least one or two down here, you know? If we could get a, you could get a, you know, obviously the dream would be a Publix, but a, a large grocery store in the core, along with a couple smaller bodega-style ones, I think that would be a huge win. And with, like I said, with, you know, if, if we're successful in this neighborhood, and there's, in three years, there's a thousand residents, a thousand units here, and, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand residents, and you can start supporting a lot more.
To that, when you talk about residents, and we talk a lot about, a lot of the development that's coming in is like a rental-type development, do you think that there will be a market for condos, like ownership downtown in the future?
Yeah, so about condos, you know, you look across the country, condos are really only being built in the really high-end markets. The, the cost to build them, the economics don't really make sense on condos. So short answer, I don't envision new condos being built at scale. Not to say that a, that a project won't work, but I think the majority of, the majority of large residential, anything over, you know, a hundred units is being built, the vast majority of those will be apartments. We are doing, so JWB is partnering with Corner Lot on a project in Lovilla that's gonna be a hundred for sale townhomes. So the city actually gave us about two and a half blocks, and we're gonna be building a hundred for sale townhomes over there. So that'll be some, some ownership product that could work. But by and large, most of it will be rental.
It will be rental, okay. Someone asked if you could real quickly distinguish low-income family affordable housing with workforce affordable housing? Because there is a difference.
Yeah, and so the definition, I mean, it just comes in what percentage of the area median income or AMI you fall under. So affordable is traditionally eighty percent or less of AMI. So the area median income, I think, is like fifty-six thousand dollars, so eighty percent of that means your household income has to be less than, you know, forty-five thousand dollars, whatever that math comes out to, to qualify for an eighty percent, you know, capital A affordable project. Workforce housing is traditionally a hundred and forty percent of AMI or less. So, you know, you can make up ninety thousand dollars and still qualify for a workforce housing unit. What's been shown over the last ten or fifteen years is that mixed-income projects are the most successful. So you can have some, you know, super low income, some, you know, affordable eighty percent AMI, and some workforce housing. Those are the most successful projects, and those are most of the projects that are getting built nowadays. Some of Best Core's projects, most of them have been that sort of mixed income, some affordable, some workforce. And that, and that's just another, you know, just a, some of the, the stigma that affordable housing gets. You know, affordable housing is, is, is our friends and family. You know, like, my, I, I, my brothers can, would qualify for the affordable housing in downtown Jacksonville when they moved here. So I think that, that the stigma that affordable housing is a negative just is not true. And it's, it's our neighbors, friends, family, ourselves, that, that could be living in an affordable project, and I think that that is, is a great thing for downtown.
Well, with that, and there's been a little bit of a question on this, and I'm gonna, you know, we, Gracie always talks about this is a safe space at Downtown Council, and so we're gonna, you know, Darren wants to know, like, how can we be you know, Darren wants to know, like, how can we be sure that new development and exciting renderings don't displace the minority residents that we have currently? Like, I mean, downtown is beautiful and eclectic because it houses all sorts of people, right? And if, like, are we going to scare people? I'm not going to use the word gentrification because I hate that word with all of my heart. But like, how how do we make sure that all the awesomeness doesn't make everyone feel like, make, doesn't make anyone feel like they can't be a part of it?
It's it's critical that downtowns are inclusive. So the Chamber just took a downtown trip to Tampa two weeks ago, and Mayor Bob Buckhorn, who was mayor of Tampa from 2011 to 2019, he just kept beating this drum that one of the reasons Tampa has been successful is because they are completely inclusive. They don't care what color you are, what race you are, who you're married to, what's your political affiliation is. We want you to feel comfortable and be in downtown. And I think that's critical. And it's something that that we're, we are trying to achieve with all of our developments. And you make something for for everyone. And and I think, you know, what what Dupont is trying to do along the riverfront, what what we're trying to do with 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 our developments is is that, you know, I mean, we, we build the shipping container apartment complex, and you can rent those out for 750 bucks a month. So, you know, it, there, we, we are trying to to create something for everyone in downtown. And I think it's even more important in the neighborhoods surrounding downtown. I mean, downtown currently, like downtown proper, the core and the villa don't have a lot of residents that, I mean, there are residents here that could be displaced. So I don't, but from a, from a number standpoint, there's not that many people that have been living in downtown for a long time. But when you look at the neighborhoods outside of downtown, like the East Side or Dirkville or Mixon Town, are really neighborhoods where we need to focus on. JWB, we've been working with, you know, Suzanne Pickett at the East Side Community Coalition about the East Side. We have a large investment in the East Side as well, and really trying to understand what the community wants and make sure that you get within trification, not gentrification. So within trification, I think I heard Ennis Davis coined this for the first time. I'll let him own that. It's not my word. But
We love Ennis around here.
But but it is, it really involves making sure that the people that have been living in the neighborhood, probably traditionally underserved neighborhoods for a long time, get to benefit and participate and have their voice heard in those, the development and realization of those neighborhoods. So so we're definitely doing that over on the East Side. And and something that we think is important, being inclusive and making sure you're not displacing existing.
Well, you kind of mentioned some other places that you're going to. And Brian Bush wants you to talk just briefly about what you're doing across the river in Old Arlington, which is an area that is, you know, it's so Jacksonville, it's lovely. But, you know, like they kind of gone, like, I mean, they're in a transition area. So like, what are you going to do there? And then the potential for other school over developments, like what's happened in San Marco?
Yeah. We love Arlington. So JWB has been investing in Arlington for a long time. And we almost can't afford it anymore because home prices have come up so much. We're getting priced out of Arlington. But but, you know, we probably have built or developed 600 or 700 houses in Arlington in the last, you know, 10 or so years. And and so what we're doing is we bought the Old Town and Country Shopping Center, and we are redoing a redevelopment over there. We're calling it College Park, putting a new facade in the center, totally redoing the parking lot, adding 80 units of residential in the parking lot, and doing an outdoor food court. We're shipping containers. It's modeled after Boxee Park, which is in Lake Nona or Sparkman's Wharf. So that project was approved by the the Advisory Council that sits over the CRA in in Arlington. And then it's been going through, I think I saw Blair on the call earlier, Kimberly Horns working on the the Civil and our zoning. So, so yeah, we're really excited about that project. We view that as, I mean, it's right across the river from downtown. I mean, it's almost the first commercial development that you see when you cross the Matthews Bridge. So we almost see that as being an extension of downtown. We're not looking at doing commercial projects all over Jacksonville, but that's one because of our our current investment in Arlington and its proximity to downtown, we thought could really be a catalyst for the neighborhood's continued growth. So really excited about about that one.
Maybe when that one starts working, we can, we can get Arlington Council and we can make sure you're out there doing
Brian, you know anyone over there?
Okay, so this is going to be our last question, and then we're going to go to breakouts. So this one's from Gracie. And I think it's a great question. Alex, what's one project another developer is working on that you are really excited about and why?
I mean, I can't name one project. I think everything that that Brian is doing at ByStar, Brian and Laura and and Bread and Board are doing at ByStar is just incredible. I mean, it's three restaurants in one building, activating the street, first floor retail. All the projects around here, I mean, one that Andy's doing at Jones is going to have the same sort of thing. See, the Laura Street Trio is right in the middle of everything. I think that that is is really critical. And I'm really looking forward to that one breaking ground, hopefully, you know, hopefully late this year, early next year. And so I'd say, you know, I can't name just one, but those are the ones that that first popped in my head.
Okay, that works. Okay, so it's 8:59. We go to nine, and it's time for breakouts. Are you cool to hang for another 15? Okay, cool. So with that, I want to thank you again and again and again and again for doing this, for everyone.
Thank you. Thank everyone on the on the call.
Well, everyone knows, like, a lot of people know, because, you know, we in council all talk a lot. We've been trying to get you on for like months now. So I'm really happy that it finally worked out.
I'm trying to get these developments, so.
I know, I know you're busy. I know you're busy. So thank you so much for finally like making everything and making it work. To that, I'm going to hand it back over to Gracie, and then Gracie and Kathy are going to put us into breakouts.
Awesome. Thank you so much again, Alex and Laura. That was fantastic. I, I don't think I've ever been in a part of a presentation where all of the downtown projects are just highlighted, like in that scope in such a short amount of time. So I'm fired up. And so what I'm really excited about is for us to have actual breakouts to talk about all these incredible projects and what this means for our city. So I'm going to ask Kathy at the Chamber to put us into breakouts. But before everyone leaves, because I know people drop off as it's nine o'clock, we have a couple of events coming up. One is Downtown Fit Club next Tuesday, starting at the Chamber, 6:00 PM, to walk, run, bike, jog around the Riverwalk and the bridges and stuff. Please join us. The information is in the chat to sign up for email reminders. And then our next morning meeting will be Friday, June 4th. Speaker details will be out soon, but just know that that's coming and we're excited for our next speaker. All right, Kathy, ready to get into groups so we can talk about all these great projects? Hang tight, everyone. All right, Kathy, ready to get into groups so we can talk about all these great projects? Hang tight, everyone.
Hey, John, Brian.
Yeah. Good morning. Welcome back. I hope you enjoyed chatting with one another about some incredible projects that are underway or soon to be underway that Alex shared. As I mentioned earlier, I'm just so excited. So we are kind of, or I am articulate about time. We have one minute left. So I just want to give you all just a huge thank you for attending. Again, thank you, Alex, for joining us. Thank you, Laura, for moderating and organizing him to come speak with us. And plug a couple of our upcoming meetings. So again, we have Fit Club, Fit Club next week, Tuesday, 6:00 PM Chamber. Let's, let's get moving and do some informal networking on the Riverwalk. And then we also have our next meeting will be Friday, June 4th in the morning via Zoom. Again, more speaker information to come, but hope you'll be able to join us then. But other than that, it's 9:15. Happy Friday. Enjoy your weekends and we look forward to seeing you next time.
Thanks, Alex. Bye.
Everybody.
I know.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.